Good evening. I'd like to extend a welcome to everyone, mayor-elect, our council members, our distinguished guests, Judge Fisher, members of the families of the newly-elected officials, and of course, our viewing audience at home. Right now, I'd like to invite the newly-elected council members to join me out front. The city of Willmar conducted a general election on November 4th, 2014, which resulted in the citizens re-electing three council members to their respective wards and electing a new council member to Ward 1. As city clerk and chief official in charge of voting, I would like to take this opportunity to present to you a certificate of election. The certificate reads, "I, Kevin Halliday, City Clerk of the City of Willmar in the State of Minnesota, do hereby certify that on the general election held in said city and state, on Tuesday being the fourth day of November 2014, Andrew Plowman received the highest number of votes cast for the office of Councilmember 1st Ward; Ron Christensen received the highest number of votes cast for the office of Councilmember 2nd Ward; Rick Fagerly received the highest number of votes cast for the office of Councilmember 3rd Ward; and Audrey Nelson received the highest number of votes cast for the office of Councilmember 4th Ward in the city of Willmar, State of Minnesota, and was therefore duly elected to said office as appears from the official election returns and canvas on file in my office." Congratulations to each one of you.[145.06][145.06](APPLAUSE). Mayor-elect, if you could join me. Also on that same day, November 4th, 2014, the citizens of this Willmar, all wards, elected Mr. Marvin Calvin as mayor to the city of Willmar. And as such, Mr. Calvin, I'd like to present you with a certificate of election that simply says, "I, Kevin Halliday, City Clerk of the City of Willmar in the State of Minnesota, do hereby certify that at a general election held in said city and state, on Tuesday being the fourth day of November 2014, Marvin Calvin received the highest number of votes cast for the office of mayor in the city of Willmar, State of Minnesota, and was therefore duly elected to said office as appears from the official election returns and canvas on file in my office." And now, I'd like to introduce the honorable Judge Jennifer Fisher.
Please raise your right hand. I, Marvin Calvin...
I, Marvin Calvin.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the constitutions of the United States...
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
...and of the State of Minnesota...
And of the State of Minnesota.
...and the Willmar City Charter...
And the Willmar City Charter.
...and that I will discharge faithfully...
And discharge faithfully...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office.
...of the city of Willmar...
Of the city of Willmar.
...to the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.[304.12][304.12](APPLAUSE).
Get him, get him sign.
Judge?
Judge, if you would sign the oath.
Judge, can you sign them all?
Thank you.
Audrey?
All four.
No, all four.
Chief of by the dozen.
You can just have them say their name. You can say "I" and then...
Please raise your right hands. I state your name.
I, Ron Christensen.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the constitutions of the United States...
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
...and of the State of Minnesota...
And of the State of Minnesota.
...and the Willmar City Charter...
And the Willmar City Charter.
...and that I will discharge faithfully...
And I will discharge faithfully...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office.
...of the city of Willmar...
Of the city of Willmar.
...to the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.[391.12][391.12](APPLAUSE).
Get him, get him sign.
Judge?
Judge, if you would sign the oath.
Judge, can you sign them all?
Audrey, did she sign it?
Doesn't matter.
You're the notary.
Yep, yep. And then the judge.
She becomes official notary. You two, sir.
You need to sign it.
We'll keep them.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Call the meeting to order. Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Amon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have Pastor Don Rigged from the E-Free Church in Willmar do our invocation for tonight.
As one of the newer residents of Willmar, I thank you all for your service. Allow me to offer a prayer. Dear God, we come humbly before you. You are king, we are the subjects. We thank you for life, liberty, and yes, even the pursuit of happiness, true happiness. We thank you for the opportunity to do that here in Willmar, Minnesota, here together with not only those of European descent, but also those with roots to Africa, Asia, South America, Native Americans, and more. What diversity right here in west-central Minnesota show us how to live together in economic and social endeavor, business and labor, agriculture and technology, government, schools, religious and secular, public and private enterprise. Show us how to live together in dynamic harmony, capitalizing on our diverse strengths while being considerate of each other's weaknesses. Show us how to rise above the pettiness of self-interest that we might care for the poor and less fortunate without penalizing industry in hard work. Help us, Father. And now, dear God, I ask you to bless our city council, beginning with our newly-elected mayor, Marvin Calvin. May he lead well, providing the vital link between council and staff. Bless our council members, Plowman, Anderson, Christensen, Johnson, Fagerly, Amon, Nelson, and Dacken. Bless them with one heart to seek the best for our great city. Bless them with grace when they differ in opinions of how to accomplish that. And bless them with humility in all things. Let them be instruments for a better tomorrow for all of our residents. I ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Don. I'd like to just add a few comments at this point for myself. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the voters of Willmar for your support in my bid to serve you as your mayor. We planned, as well as we prepared, for the election in November, always having our eyes on this day being sworn in as your new mayor. I have been humbled by your kind words and notes of encouragement as I prepared for today. I also would like to thank my campaign committee, my family who's here, my wife Jenna, my son Rob, his daughter Ella, and my daughter Michelle and her husband Greg Tobin, and Kalani who are with us. So, thank you for your hard work for helping me get to this point. Also, my campaign manager Kathy Schwantus, who's also with us, thank you for your hard work as well. You know, I was told when I take the seat at the council table, it would look very different from sitting back with staff, and boy, does it. Wow, what an awesome responsibility. I am here and ready to get to work for you, all the citizens of Willmar. So, I've been asked, what have you been doing to get ready? Well, the answer is quite simple. I've been attending meetings. Yes, lots of meetings. I have met with all of our council members, all of our city department heads. I, along with city administrator Stevens and mayor pro tem Anderson, have met with our legislative partners in St. Paul. I've had contact with our regional stakeholders, our county board, our local mayors, as I learn how we can together partner to advance our region in a healthy way. I have talked with and listened to members of the business community, industry partners, along with many individuals and community groups. It has been very rewarding hearing what each person brings to the table and what they view as our important, most next steps. So, what have I heard? The message has been the same as when I was on the campaign trail. Zach Leible's here too. I'm sure he heard the same thing when he was out there. We have a great community, and we want to, we all want to do what is best for our community. Yes, we have a number of items that we need to address, and we have concerns that must be heard. I will define and outline my next steps as we work to move Willmar forward as a premier regional city in Minnesota. This plan will be presented at our next council meeting when I deliver my first state-of-the-city address. I invite you to attend or watch on our cable access channel to hear my details on my plan for Willmar. We must not lose sight of the fact that we have a growing vibrant community where great things happen every day. I am excited about our next four years, and I hope you are as well. My goal is to develop an atmosphere where we can all pull together, making Willmar an even better place to live, work, and raise our families. Again, thank you for your vote of confidence in being here tonight. Now, let's get busy and get to work. Thank you very much. Okay, proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to consider... Okay, there's no additions to the, deletions to the agenda, so it's the consideration of the reorganization resolutions. The first item on the agenda is to elect our mayor pro tem. So, the charter of the city of Willmar provides that in the absence of the, or the disability of the mayor, an acting mayor, mayor pro tem shall be appointed by the action of the city council. So, what we will do is we'll call for people that are interested, the nominations are now open, for the position of mayor pro tem.
Mayor Calvin.
Councilmember Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome.
Thank you.
I'd like to place the name of Ron Christensen in nomination.
Okay, we have a nomination for Ron Christensen. Are there other nominations?
Mayor Calvin.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'd like to place the name of councilmember Anderson.
Councilmember Anderson has been placed into the nominations. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the nominations. We have two nominations. In front of you, you have your white papers, and what I'd ask you to do is place the name of the individual who you would like to serve as mayor pro tem. That would be either councilmember Christensen or councilmember Anderson. On the bottom of that document that you're going to send to, fold in half and send to the city clerk, you will place your initials. So, the name of the candidate you want selected, and on the bottom of the document will be your initials. Are there any questions on how the voting's going to happen? When you're done with that, please forward those to, pass them down this way. We'll give them to Kevin Halliday, and Kevin Halliday will be the official counter of When we're doing that, I failed to thank our honorable Fisher for being here and helping us with our oaths of office, so Judge Fisher, thank you for your service to our community. You are not only a good, faithful servant that way, but also you're very committed and involved in our community, and thank you for your community service.
The council has voted mayor pro tem Ron Christensen.
Okay, mayor pro tem is Ron Christensen.
So, that's a resolution. We need to make a motion to introduce the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by councilmember Fagerly, seconded by councilmember Amon. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
I.
Amon.
I.
Johnson.
I.
Nelson.
No.
Plowman.
I.
Dacken.
I.
Christensen.
I.
Fagerly.
I.
Seven ayes, one nay.
Motion passes. Next, we'll, consideration to set parliamentary rules. Kevin, do you want to give us the background on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, the city charter two years ago made clarity that we are to have a set of rules that are established by five main bodies. Those are the ones that were listed in the charter. Staff researched all of them, made a recommendation to have the standard code of parliamentary procedure adopted. We have been under those for a couple of years, and we find that to be a very acceptable code of standard, and it is staff's recommendation that we adopt a resolution selecting the standard code of parliamentary procedure to have the council follow and all boards and commissions for the next two-year period.
Okay, I'll, somebody introduce that.
Second?
Councilmember Christensen made the motion, seconded by councilmember Anderson. You raised your hand, right?
I did, but I was going to recommend that we need a motion to recommend one?
I thought that's what you were doing.
That's what we're doing.
I thought that's what you were doing when you raised your hand.
But we have to recommend this one, from what I'm understood.
Staff's recommendation is to recommend that one. That's what the resolution is.
Okay. I raised my hand, but Dennis made the motion.
Okay, Dennis made the motion, seconded by Rick. I thought you were raising your hand, saying that you were making the motion. You were the first one I recognized. Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amon.
I.
Johnson.
I.
Nelson.
I.
Plowman.
I.
Dacken.
I.
Christensen.
I.
Fagerly.
I.
Anderson.
I.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next in will be discussion of council committee appointments. City Administrator Stevens?
Yes, the city council has had a structure in place where they have done a number of, organized themselves in committee format, and then also have had liaisons from the city council to various other committees, such as the Rice Hospital, Municipal Utilities, Community Education and Recreation, to name just a few. The council needs to determine if that's this, first, the structure they wish to continue with, and if so, the, in the attached resolution is a listing of all of the committees and the vacant, and the numbers that need to, the positions that need to be filled by council members for those, and I would recommend that you probably go through them perhaps one by one to keep it, so that we can fill those in as your discussion unfolds.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments at this point in regards to the process. I do understand that this process is a council-driven process, that the mayor is here, and, but that the council are the ones that actually set the committee members. What I would ask you to consider at this time is that we place people into those committee roles, but that we consider having more work sessions, and so that we can all hear the same information, get the same handouts, those types of things that happen. So, work more in a work session form, although still have our committee structure in place, and so that's something I'd want you to consider as well. I think it's important to continue with how we have gone through the process, and then when we get to all the council liaison positions and those types of things. I do have the list of people who serve on those current committees. I also have the responsibilities as outlined in the council liaison positions, when they meet, how often they meet, those types of things, if the council wants that for background information. In the past, that's been asked, and so we are prepared today to have that information for you if you wish to have it. So, at this point, I would open it up on how you would like to formulate the committee process as it, as it relates to today. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Throughout the years, we have had many special, we call them work sessions, we've kept them to an hour each, and I don't know as if we need to have any more full, I mean, we meet enough, and if we keep the, the committee structure, which I'm all in favor of, it gives people in the community a more relaxed situation to give testimony to or voice their concerns. I would not be in favor of having more, any more work sessions than we've had in the past. I think the committee structure has worked very well. It works well at the state capitol and Washington, and again, it gives the general public a more relaxed atmosphere to voice their concerns. I understand where you're coming from, but I think, I think all issues need to start at a committee level and move their way to the council as we have been doing for years. It's a good structure, gives chairs responsibility, and I would, I would opt for keeping the committee structure the way it is without any more, I mean, you, as mayor, can call any special meetings anytime you want. It says so in our charter, and all we need is 12 hours' notice, actually. So, I would opt to keep the committee structure and have all issues go through the appropriate committee. It works well, it has worked, and I think it will continue to work well.
Mayor Calvin.
Yes, councilmember Nelson.
Just a question, if we stay with the committee structure as it is now, and we work through some of the issues that I think the committees have, and if the committees can be more effective, then that's probably okay. But right now, I don't feel like the committees are effective. We go through the process of bringing through things at the committee, and we end up having to repeat and repeat and repeat at the council level, and I frankly think it might be more productive for the public to hear it firsthand at the committee or at the council meetings versus having gone through the committee structure and all of those, because I don't believe that this council currently respects the committee structure or respects the recommendations of the committee. And I would hope that if we do have a strategic planning retreat, or just a retreat to find a way to make this council work together, that we could sit down and look at, you know, how can we do that? How can the work of one committee be respected by the council? Granted, there needs to be questions asked, but I believe that right now, our staff is spending more time preparing information for committees and repeating it again at the council level in full detail. If there's a summary, that's one thing, but we aren't allowing that to happen. So, I guess I, I frankly think maybe we ought to leave the committee structure just as it is with the same people on the committee structure until we have a chance to do a strategic plan, see if we can agree to some things, see if we can find a way to work forward with the information. So, I guess, go back to my original question, can we change this later if we stay with the structure as it is now? I don't know if that's a question for staff or...
I think that, I think that we can do that. I think that if we do a strategic planning session, come back, we can make that adjustment at any time, but I'll defer that question to the city attorney.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, that is correct. You are solely in charge of how you organize yourself with your committees or otherwise, and if at any point you decide to go in a different direction than something you've done in the past, you have that power to do so.
Thank you. Other discussion. Councilmember Amon.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. I don't know if this is the appropriate time if you wanted us to discuss this issue or not, but I agree with your idea of having some joint meetings. I earlier sent out a list of some priorities that I thought are some issues that I think we should be dealing with to all the council people through the administrator's office, and I think there's, there's certain issues that come up which could be legislative that are happening at the state and federal level that we should be informed in or formed of to see if there's appropriate action that this group in this city might want to take steps on, whether it be lobbying or whatever. I think we've been lacking that, and I would agree with having a meeting once every three months or whatever the council would like to agree on to discuss those issues, and then every three months, have a joint meeting to discuss where, where we are in our priorities and where, what stage are we in those priorities. That would be a constructive planning session and an update and briefing of the progress that we're making to date. I would, I would be very agreeable to that.
Councilmember Nelson.
That was an accident, but I was thinking about. I'm just curious if...
I am watching.
(LAUGH) I'll keep my hands on the table. Just curious if there is any support for leaving the committee structure as is and putting councilmember Plowman in where councilmember DeBlick was and letting it stay. We've got some issues, I think, at several committees, and letting the chair and the co-chairs stay as they are with the committee structure until we've had a chance to review that. I can make that...
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your work sessions, are they going to be just work sessions for information, or some of them will be voting on, and it'll be actual record?
My intent was that they'd be work sessions to gather information, and still come back to the full body at a formal council meeting for the action to take place. That was my recommendation. Okay. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Calvin. You know, we're pretty used to this process with the committees, but I think we need to look at what is going to be the most effective, most effective use of our time and what's best for, for the community. So, I would suggest that we stay with it as, as it is, but certainly talk about it at a retreat whenever that might come forward, because I think there is an opportunity to have a more of a gathering of the, of the full council and just talk about things. We tend to be a little bit fragmented when we're in, in committee structure, and I think it would allow us the opportunity to just have some better general overall discussion... it would allow us the opportunity to just have some better general overall discussion. So I'd be in favor of pursuing that idea.
Further discussion, otherwise I'm hearing consensus on filling the committee positions, so I guess what I heard from councilmember Nelson is that there's an interest to insert councilmember Plowman where councilmember DeBlique was. Is there support at that, or do we, you want to go through them individually, one by one, starting with labor? Councilmember Johnson.
Trying to change the chairs around, Mr. Mayor.
I'm a little confused.
I saw my-
Looks, looks, looks pretty new for me, though.
I'm not sure, I guess, on, on the committee appointments, it's, I mean, my, I've participated in this event several times, but my recollection is, or my impression was always that we did it by seniority in each ward, as the senior ward council member picking the two committees that they wanted to serve on, and then the junior member getting the other two, and then, and then I know in some wards, such as Ward Two, I and Mr. Christensen have on occasion switched them over time, just by agreement, which works well also.
Further discussion?
Just a clarification of when the-
Councilmember Nelson.
I apologize, sir. Mayor?
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Just a clarification of what that meant by switching when they felt like it.
What I heard him say, and I'll let him answer for himself after I answer, but what I heard him say is that if they agreed that, maybe at the beginning of the year, that they would switch positions on the particular committees, is that correct? Correct. Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, we, councilmember Christensen and Ward Two initially followed the seniority concept, and then after my first term, we just decided to switch a couple of the committees, just to expand our perspective, if you will. And that was just done on a voluntary basis. We discussed it and decided to do it, so.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It'd be Andrew and I in Ward One, and I've always been the, the junior member of the Ward One until now, and I'm, I would be very comfortable with councilmember Plowman taking the positions that councilmember DeBlique formerly held on, on the committees.
What I'm hearing is that councilmember Anderson is recommending that he stay on finance and labor, is that correct? Councilmember Christ, I'm sorry, councilmember Dachin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From my standpoint, I would prefer to be on finance and labor also, as the senior member from the fourth ward.
Okay, Ward Two?
He's in four.
Ward Two? Oh, you're Ward Two, yeah. I'm calling on Ward Two. I've got Ward One, and I've got Ward Four, so I'm trying to get back to two and then three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will continue with Public Works, Public Safety, and Labor.
Ward Three?
Steve and I agreed we're going to stay where we're at, so I'll be on Community Development and Finance, and he'll be on Labor and Public Works.
Mr. Halliday, do you have that?
I have their request. There's a battle with Mr. Dachin changing, so we have to get. Mr. Dachin wants Labor and Finance, and he is on Labor and Community Development, so you need to resolve that. Did I hear that right, councilmember Dachin?
Uh-huh. I would prefer to be on Finance and on Labor.
Okay, so tell me where the opening is.
There's a-
Community Development.
Community Development. And- Dachin, councilmember Dachin would rather go up to the Finance Committee, and the senior, senior member there, councilmember Anderson, chairing. If you want to do that, then councilmember Johnson and councilmember Nelson would be rearranged to a different committee, Community Development, on a system of your choice.
Okay. If we've gone traditionally seniority, that's what I heard tonight, I heard this afternoon, we've gone traditionally seniority, would it not be seniority based on the committee that they chose to serve on? And then at that point, did we go to seniority of the three wards first?
Okay.
Or are you two fine with-
Seniority first would bump councilmember Nelson to Community Development. And I have to pause for a moment to see who's on. I have a one, two, three, four. Well, that balances for Finance. Community Development, I have a three, one, four, two. That switch works.
I'm con- Mayor?
Councilmember Nelson?
I'm confused with who's ending up where, and I do have a question on Labor. I'm just wondering since if Mr. Johnson should be taking Mr. Christensen's position, since he is part of the negotiating, so that there aren't two people on Labor from Ward Two.
Kevin, could you give us-
That's interesting.
Could you give us the who's on what committee, please? Read it to us?
Well, there's the flaw here. Labor Committee, from the resolution of two years ago, was councilmember Amen, Chair, Dachin, Vice Chair Christensen, Anderson. Yet Johnson and Christensen made their flip, and I guess we didn't officially catch it.
No.
No, I don't believe that correct.
I think what happened is, is that councilmember Anderson and councilmember Johnson served
on the negotiating, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's a different group.
So, not on the committee itself, but that was the group assigned for negotiations. That's different.
Okay.
So what I'm asking is, do we have one representative from each ward?
We do, sir. By-
By seniority.
Granting councilmember Dachin his choice on the Finance Committee, and moving councilmember Nelson to the Community Development Committee gives us one from each ward on those committees.
Okay. Could you read those committee assignments, and then I would entertain a resolution for that?
Labor, Chair, councilmember Amen, Vice Chair Dachin, Christensen, Anderson. Finance Committee, Chair, councilmember Anderson, Vice Chair Johnson, Fagerly, Dachin. Community Development Committee, Chair, councilmember Fagerly, Vice Chair Plowman, Nelson, and Johnson. Public Works, Safety Committee, Chair, councilmember Christensen, Vice Chair Nelson, Amen, and DeBlique. Not DeBlique, how about Plowman? Hope that's the first time I do that and the last.
Mayor Kelvin?
Councilmember Nelson?
Just a question, if I remember correctly, last time, chairs and vice chairs were voted on besides the committee structure, so if we're changing the structure, then I think we should be voting on who's chair and who's vice chair, too.
That's why I wanted, I wanted it red, so that we could make sure that's the way that we wanted. I heard councilmember Anderson say that he was fine with the switch, so we'll go through these one at a time, but not vote on them one at a time, but we'll just go through them one at a time to make sure that we have the chair and vice chair properly seated. So Chair for Labor and Vice Chair for Labor?
Councilmember Amen, Chair, Vice Chair, councilmember Dachin.
Are those assigned to that committee, okay with that?
Mayor Kelvin?
Councilmember Amen.
I'll accept that position again. There's some unfinished business I'm working on. I'd like to finish out two more years there.
Okay. If we're going to change what we're saying, then we'll discuss it, otherwise we'll just keep it going the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
Finance Committee?
Chair, councilmember Anderson, Vice Chair, councilmember Johnson.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Christensen.
Do we nominate, or leave it to each committee, who's going to be Chair, Vice Chair, et cetera?
That's correct, that's what we're doing right now.
Okay, so is the Finance Committee going to nominate their chairman, then? Or is it the entire council?
Well, it's a council action, but I thought it, what I heard said was that it's done by the committee. That's why I had Kevin read who the committee members were, and then those committee members are to say if they want it left that way or to change it. That was my intent. Is that clear?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Community Development?
Chair, councilmember Fagerly, Vice Chair, councilmember Plowman.
Public Works, Public Committee, Public Safety?
Chair, councilmember Christensen, Vice Chair, councilmember Nelson.
Okay. I know this is going to add another resolution for you, but I want to take that resolution now, complete that piece, so we have the committees' structure in place.
We can do that.
We're very flexible, Mr. Mayor.
So I would, I'm looking for a introduction of the resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made, seconded, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, are we going to work for Chair and Vice Chair on Labor? Is it outlined here, or are we just going to do this all in one, one motion?
All in one motion. That's what I, that's what we called them out, so if they were going to be different, we would change them at that point.
Okay. I'm just curious if there's anybody else that wants to trade positions, if, you know, or trade chairmanship, or whatever. I don't want to, I don't have to be chairman if somebody else wants, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, but we already had that part of, we already had that discussion, and so we're moving on to the motion now. Discussion's on the motion. We'll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Dachin.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Council liaison positions, you have the council liaison positions in front of you. There's one that I would like to add in addition to what you have on your agenda, in your agenda, and that's the position of Human Rights, of Human Rights Commission? I'm sorry, is it Commissioner Board?
Human Rights Commission.
Human Rights Commission.
Anderson is on it.
So at this point, councilmember Anderson is on that, and so I want to add that, because that was not in your packet, so I'm asking, I've asked staff to add that additional position. So at this point, there should be discussion about who wants to serve on each one of them. There's two ways we can do it. We can go about it, and I can read the commission and who's on it, or you guys can just kind of look at what's there and kind of go from that position. It's going to be your wish and what you want to do with that. I guess yours don't say who currently serves on them, but-
You would, yeah, you'll need to read that.
Okay.
We did not include that, because we didn't make an assumption that you were going to continue in the current, so if you would read through that list, that would probably be helpful.
Okay. So first off, we have the Airport Commission. Currently serving on that is councilmember Dachin. That's fine. Community Education, Recreation, Joint Powers Board and Park Board, currently, that is being served by Johnson and Nelson.
Mayor Kelvin, I'm-
Councilmember Nelson?
I'm willing to continue serving on that one.
Economic Development Commission. Currently, it is being served by Anderson, Christensen, and Amen. It is a voting position. I would like to be added back onto that. Mayor Yanish was not, had asked to be not on that, and so I would ask that my name be submitted as, back onto the Economic Development Commission. And also, the bylaws of that organization changed, and so an alternate can be added to that position, so there's actually a total of four people that could be on that. And so, again, currently on there is Anderson, Christian, and Amen, and I would respectfully request being added to that. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We actually changed the bylaws stating that any one of the three that are on that commission can request any one of the council people to sit in for them and have voting rights.
Correct.
We, we just changed that in, what was it?
Just this past year.
This past year, yeah. Because when one council member is, and there's only six people on that commission, and sometimes two commissioners can't make it, or two council people, and so we need that, needed that, and we changed the bylaws to that effect. I didn't, I don't recall saying that we have an alternate, a fourth person.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. We did, we did change it just this past year, that we would allow an alternate. I think it makes sense that we have someone, maybe that way we would get some consistency. That person would always be the person that was called to go in and do the voting. I know that the county board has a listed alternate for that, and you're right, we haven't done that in the past, but I think that would be the appropriate way to, to handle that.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would add my name to that list, the voted upon.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be on that, too.
So would I, Mr. Mayor.
What I'm hearing being said at this point would be myself, councilmember Anderson, councilmember Christensen, councilmember Amen. Fire Code Appeals Board, Chair currently is councilmember Christensen, Vice Chair, I'm sorry.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order, identify what your violation of the order is.
The order of the decision on the EDC, there's four people who want to be on it, but there's only three positions. Have we defined that?
I thought we just said that there were four positions that are on it, and one of those serves as an alternate. That's what was talked about.
Well, I'd like to be on, I'd like to have a vote on it if I'm, if somebody isn't going to be, be on it, we're going to have the standing three, and if you want to move in on that, I'd like to vote on it.
Well, that certainly, are you, are you asking for a separate vote on that, is what you're asking?
I'd like to have a separate vote on the, on the alternate.
Okay. Additional discussion? So do we, I'm confused on that because we don't-
I would need clarification of who you placed on the alternate. Was the mayor placed as an alternate, or it's undefined?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need to decide who the, who the candidates should be for, for the various positions, including the alternate. I think we, we need to make that, that choice. And we need to remember that the mayor had always been on that board until two years ago, when the former mayor decided to opt off, so we put someone in, and I won't call it a temporary position, but I, you know, I think there was always the understanding that it's the mayor's position. It's not written that way in the bylaws or anything, but the mayor has always served on that board, so he needs to be on there. So I think we need to have a vote to decide who the three are, and who the alternate is.
Additional discussion? Do you understand the question in front of us, Kevin?
I'm processing how the vote's going myself.
Well, what you'd have to do at this point is you would have four people. The top three vote-getters would be the ones that would proceed as the primary. The person who received the least amount of votes would be the one that would be the alternate. Is that appropriate?
And everybody votes four names.
Four, everybody votes four names, with the exception of the mayor.
Yep.
Mayor Kelvin?
Councilmember Nelson?
Just a, just a question, should your name be in there, since it was set up basically before that the mayor was there, and Mayor Yanish chose not to, so should, should your name just automatically be there, and then we vote for the other ones?
Well, I think that, that assumption could certainly be made, but the way that the- the charter is set is that, at the reorganization meeting, people are then assigned to those particular committees or commissions. And so, I believe that it would be the responsibility of this body to place those individuals on there. If the council chooses to not place the mayor on there, that's the council's prerogative. I, you know, it's a weak mayor form of government. You know, what we're dealing with here is we're dealing with some issues that happened with the previous mayor who didn't wanna serve on boards and commissions. Now you have a mayor that wants to be involved, and you as a council have to make that determination. Is it important for your mayor to be represented at these meetings or not? And that's the, that's the council's responsibility. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe, might be easier if we just voted on the alternate. One name.
That would be easier.
Writing four on there and getting, you know, counting all these votes, I mean, it's kinda silly to do that.
Makes sense.
I would move that we do that, just to get this...
A motion's been made by Councilmember Anderson to vote on the alt, I'm sorry, Councilmember Christensen to vote on the alternate. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been seconded, discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign? The way you will vote is you will name the alternate, you will place your initials at the bottom of the voting paper, pass them to City Clerk for tally. For our newspaper sitting in the back there, our vote tallies will be available at the conclusion of the meeting for your review, if you choose so. Kevin Halliday will have those, along with the tallies, along with the signed documents, or initial documents.
Am I waiting for one to come down?
Did somebody not vote?
I think I didn't vote.
Okay, if you don't wanna vote, you still have to initial and sign the paper in. Okay.
The council has voted Councilmember Amen as the alternate.
Okay. Fire Code Appeals Board. On the Fire Code Appeals Board, I would recommend that the Chair turn into the mayor pro tem, and then that you would select a Vice Chair. The reason for it is that in the absence of the mayor, the mayor pro tem serves in that position. The mayor does not serve on the Fire Code Appeals Board. In the past, that position has been held by Councilmember Christensen, with the Vice Chair being Councilmember Anderson. So again, I would recommend that the mayor pro tem be the Chair of the Fire Code Appeals Board.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Anderson?
I think that makes sense. I think we've met once or twice in the last six years, so I don't think it's a, it's a burden. Probably all, speaking in my behalf, I'm happy to stay there.
Additional discussion? Okay, Human Rights Commission, currently served by Councilmember Anderson.
Again, Mr. Mayor, that's right.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to serve, that's another, another commission that hasn't met, but I'm happy to be the representative.
Mid-Minnesota Development Commission, Councilmember Fagerly.
I've been on it for two years, and I'm happy to stay there.
Okay, we are, we're over halfway through the list, and we have a new council member. And remember that, you know, I certainly hope that you're looking at how we're going to have council members equally serve on the boards and commissions, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did, did we put Dennis as Vice Chair on the Fire Code Appeal Board, that's just given?
Yes, I did not hear any discussion, so I assume that to be true.
Okay, I didn't hear it stated, so...
Mid-Minnesota Development Commission, Council, Councilmember Fagerly currently serves on that. Again, if you wanna know how often these are meet, or anything like that, you need to let me know, otherwise I'm just gonna keep going through the list, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Being the new gentleman at the table, so to speak, I'm, I'm very open to suggestion from yourself, from other council members, as to where I might correctly fit in. I don't have any, any game plan as to where I would necessarily prefer to be or like to be one over another, so, that said, I'm open to suggestion from those of you with more experience than I.
Certainly, and that's why I made the comment, I mean, thank you for pointing that out, that your willingness to serve. Municipal Utilities Commission, currently an open spot, and the alternate is Councilmember Dacken.
I would prefer to move up to be the, the person. I also serve on Rice Hospital, I would like to be removed from that when that comes up, but I would like to continue at the MUC.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if, if the alternate might be a good spot for Councilmember Plowman on the Utilities Commission?
I don't wanna speak for Councilmember Plowman, but that's a very labor-intensive position. There's a, there's a lot of work that goes with that one, I just want you to understand that that's a, not that you're not capable, that's not what I'm saying, but I know in conversations you and I have had is that you're concerned about time.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my main consideration is, is basically just the, the hours in the protocol, as long as it lends itself to my schedule and, say, workday hours, and then, you know, time with my family, I'll make as much time as available.
That, that, that commission meets the second and fourth Monday at noon. Meet twice a month at noon. So I'm hearing at this point is Council, Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I understand it, though, the alternate doesn't go to all the meetings, it's just in case...
Correct.
The designated person cannot make it. I mean, I, I don't recall, did, did you attend any for...
Occasionally.
Very rarely, yeah. 'Cause it is twice a month, Andrew, it's, it's two times a month, and...
You still have to prepare for the meeting.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
What's going on?
You got that, Kevin?
It's down.
Okay. Pioneer Library System, currently served by Councilmember Anderson.
I would definitely like to continue.
Rice Hospital Board, Councilmember Dacken is asked to be taken off of that. Councilmember Amen is listed as the alternate.
Councilmember?
Councilmember Nelson?
I would be interested in serving on the Rice Hospital Board.
Councilmember Amen?
I have no problem with that, that's fine. She's served on the board before, and might be a good fit for her.
My question is then on who becomes the alternate and who becomes the primary?
Who's, who's the alternate now? I'm sorry.
Alternate now is Councilmember Amen. Do you wanna stay as the alternate?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson as the primary, alternate being Councilmember Amen. Now, is this right? No, this isn't right. Central Community Transit Board. DeBlique and Fagerly, it's an open position in Fagerly, is a voting position.
Mr. Mayor, is there two members that attend that, or is it the alternate?
No, it's two members that attend.
Oh, boy.
I'm happy to stay there, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fagerly, is it indicated in interest to remain? We need one additional person for there? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How often do they meet, Rick?
They meet 10:00 AM on Fridays, approximately four times a year, as needed. Councilmember Fagerly?
And they just merged with Renville County, so Renville comes up here, we meet at the Catbus office, so it's right in town.
So you'll never alternate and go down there to meet?
Yeah. Usually it's nine o'clock we meet, but they might be changing it because they're driving up.
No dares.
Well, if you, if someone would wanna recommend your mayor, you could do that.
I would do that.
More meetings?
Don't tell my wife.
Did she hear?
Now make that motion.
I'll second that.
I think, I don't need, know that we need a motion, I think we just need a name at this point. So it'd be myself and Councilmember Fagerly. Vision 2040 Committee, that again was a position that the mayor historically has served on, on the Vision 2020 process. Mayor Heitke and City Administrator Schmidt served on that. Originally, the former mayor did not have an interest in serving on that. I currently serve on three of the four groups, and I would ask to be, have my name considered for that position as well, on the Vision 2040 Committee. And then, we are only looking for one person there, we're not looking for an alternate. The city is the only one that had an alternate in there, and I believe that that was because of what had happened with the mayor, so in talking with Vision 2040, they would like one name coming from the council for that position. Again, I'd like to serve in that position. Historically, that has been a mayor's position.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Plowman?
I think that's a good fit.
Cable Advisory Committee, I'm sorry, Cable Advisory Board, Christensen and Anderson, again a voting position. Wilmer, Wilmer Convention and Visitors Bureau, currently held by Councilmember Nelson.
Mayor Calvin?
Councilmember Nelson?
I would be interested in serving on that one again.
Wilmer Committee, Community and Activity Center Council, currently serving is Councilmember Johnson.
I'm fine with continuing on that one, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Wilmer Design Center, currently served by Councilmember Amen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Steve and I had talked about it, and he's willing to go off, and I'll, I can fill in for him.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, it's actually now the Wilmer Downtown Development, too. It's, the name has just changed.
Looking at the wrong piece of paper.
But it was previously the Design Center, so, and it has just recently changed. But it is the same organization, just a name change.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fagerly, I'm sorry, Councilmember Amen?
Yeah, we talked for about 15 seconds, Rick, before the meeting, but after looking at my, I don't wanna be the person that's not working as equally as everybody else, but it looks to me like I'll only be in one other committee, and I don't wanna be the slacker. Just wonder, maybe I shouldn't stay on it for two more years, unless you want it, but I, I just don't wanna, I want everybody to share the burden.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see there's one that's not on here, that's the HRA, liaison, liaison to the HRA.
Yeah, we were told that that, now that that is underneath the county, that, that we don't have a representative on that anymore?
That was not my understanding, when the, I, I attended all the meetings, emerging meeting, and I understood that there would be, there's gonna be a non-voting council person there and a non-voting commissioner there.
Is that, I'm sorry, council...
If Mr. Christensen understands that from the meetings, then he would be correct in such, and so that you may have, you can assign a liaison to that, and it's a non-voting member.
So we need one position for that?
One position for that.
Okay, I did not read that. Councilmember Christensen, and currently serving is Councilmember Christensen and Councilmember Dacken.
I think Mr. Amen would do very well at that.
Trying to give me some work?
Well, there's some...
I'll take whatever the, whatever the group wants to give me, that's fine.
I'll be the alternate, I don't have a problem with that, but I, I think it important that a city person be there. We just turned over all of our property, HRA property, to the county. There will be city representatives on there, because we have three county commissioners there in the city, and they have to appoint people from their districts to serve on that board, so the city will be represented on there.
Right.
And a lot of things happen at the HRA that, I mean, they have bonding authority, and we're getting requests from different committees or entities for bonding and for borrowing money and for subordinating loans, so, and it's in the city's interest to continue having a liaison there. I mean, the, the majority of the HRA properties are in the city of Wilmer. I mean, we had, I forget, four or five times as many as the county, maybe as more than that, it was, it was quite a bit. And so it's in our interest to continue to see how things are, how things operate out there. I'd be more than happy to be the alternate, too.
Okay, so Kevin, you've got the Housing and redevelopment Authority, and what I'm hearing is Councilmember Amen with the alternate as being Councilmember Christensen, is that what you had?
Yes, with Councilmember Fagerly then staying in the downtown development.
Correct.
Yep, done.
Okay, do we want to read those back through, otherwise I would enter, I would accept the motion for the resolution?
Move to approve, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve, additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Okay, thank you, that passes. Then we are to declaring the legal newspaper? Kevin?
I believe Mr. First is the establishment of the city council meeting dates and times.
I have a different order, sir.
Okay, next is we have the council meeting dates, sorry about that, I'm just learning this computer, hopefully you guys will understand, so, council meeting dates.
We'd like to point out in the resolution that it's going to state that we will meet on the Tuesdays after legal holidays, precluding us to take action each time in the future, if you stay with Mondays.
Okay, so the motion, or the recommendation from staff is that we have the meetings on Mondays, and when a legal holiday falls, falls on a Monday, you automatically move it to the Tuesday, so then at the council meetings, we would not have to call that out separately, it would just be an automatic thing done at the reorganization meeting.
I'll move that.
As motions have been made, is there a second? Councilmember, you got the second? Motion's been made and seconded, additional discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
Just, just a request that those dates be put out on the calendar, for more than one month at a time, if we can just do the whole year, if we pass this resolution, so that the dates are on the city calendar.
We can certainly do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Okay, the motion passes, the resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is consideration of declaring the legal newspaper. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you the resolution to appoint the West Central Tribune as our legal newspaper for the next two-year period. It is the recommendation of the attorney, really, that we don't have any other choices, it's the one that fits, the opportunity to reach out to our citizens with the greatest, as you may recall, we took bids and... bids and RFPs on that a couple of years ago, and some of the other papers may be cheaper, but they certainly are not daily, and they don't reach all of our citizens. So, it is staff's recommendation that we appoint the West Central Tribune as the legal newspaper for a two-year period.
Move to approve.
Second.
Has a motion been made and seconded to approve the West Central Tribune as our newspaper for our city business? Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that this session down at the State St. Paul, it will be brought up, at least in the House, the, there's a state statute that requires this.
Right.
And they're, they're going to talk about, as I understand it, allowing it to be on your website or an internet-based facility, as these days newspapers don't reach everybody. And it would save the city, well, $38,000. The school district would save money, and the county would save money. And again, as I understand it, they will be talking about it this session. I don't know when, but just FYI.
Right, I had seen that as well. And again, like we stated earlier, if we want to change any of this down the road, we certainly can by a simple motion. Is that correct, council?
Actually, on this particular issue, you're required to declare your legal newspaper at your organizational meeting, which this is. In this circumstance, I believe the only newspaper qualified, defined as a qualified newspaper in the city is the West Central Tribune. And because their offices are in the city by statute, the council really has no choice. It has to declare the West Central Tribune to be the legal newspaper.
I understand that, but my, my question specifically was, is that if the legislation changes before they adjourn, could we come back and redress this issue?
I assume you could. I suppose it would depend exactly when the effective date is and what the change is, but yes, in theory, I think you could, probably.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Roman.
This is the first time this was brought up. How, what is the, what is the amount of households that the, I think there's a 75% rule that we have to somehow reach publication or the information goes to 75% of the population, so that we're doing our job as far as transparency. Do we know what the West Central Tribune's readership level is in the city of Wilmer?
Kevin, do we know that answer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do not have that information, but I believe they're proud of that, so those are statistics that we could get with a, with a quick phone call. So.
Councilmember Amen, do you need that before you can make a decision?
Well, I, I understand that it's the, it's best choice we have right now. I'm not debating that, but as far as the intent of the state statute, of course, was to get people informed in their community, be informed. And since we have a minority population of 30%, approximately 30% according to last census, in our community, I'm just wondering how that's all digested by those groups or minorities when it's only in one, one language, and whether or not they are adequately being informed of the actions of this community. My, my concern, obviously, is, is to see if we can get as many people involved, that are minorities, involved in the government process. And by us not reaching them, I think we're doing them a disservice. So, my concern is, we should maybe be addressing that also in some other form or looking at another option if, if the 75% rule is not being complied with or we don't reach the 75%. But I, I have a feeling, Kevin, we're going to probably be reaching that once you get the numbers, but I'd be interested to see what the, what the readership is.
Okay, so I'll ask Kevin to bring that back to the next meeting. I believe that our legal council has told us that the only newspaper that meets the requirement is the West Central Tribune. So, I guess I'm having a little bit of difficulty understanding why we would discuss that if they're the ones that meet the intent. Additional discussion?
Mayor Calvin.
Councilmember Nelson.
I thought we had to do this tonight, and I believe that we've already gone down this road once before, and that the city attorney has referenced all of this information, has come back and told us that the West Central Tribune is the only one there that does that, so I'm not sure what we're waiting for with it. Second thing is, the question that I have, I think we're already putting all of this information on the internet also that is, so it is available for those who do not get the newspaper already. So, if someone has internet access, they do have access to the publication. So, I, just a point of question, why, why we wouldn't do this tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
What I want us to do is I want us to move forward in our decision-making process. So, if we're adding additional new information, I'll recognize you, Councilmember Amen. Otherwise, if we're ready to vote, I think we're probably at that point.
My intent is not to not vote in favor of this. My, the issue I'm bringing up is the issue of transparency and communication, that maybe we should be looking at it. Therefore, I brought this up at this time to alert the council that maybe we could do, be doing a better job in that, in that area, and it's something for us to work on. I just wanted to bring it up at this, at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a state statute that says if that local carrier paper does not meet 75, or does not get to 75% of the constituents, that contract can be canceled. There is, and all Mr. Amen is asking for, I believe, is just, let's, let's get the current audit from them and see where they're at. I mean, what, it's pretty simple. I mean, there are 8,000 some houses in Wilmer, and they, their circulation is 11 something, and I suspect most of it's in Wilmer, so let's just get the numbers and be done with it.
Okay. I did ask our city clerk to gather that information, bring it back to us. So, City Administrator Stevens, could you have that information for us and present it in the Friday memo, please?
Yes, we will have that for you.
Mayor Yannis.
Councilmember Nelson. Again, are we getting words more moving forward? New information's what we're looking for.
Correct. I think also with that information, what we still are required to do, if that can be put in the memo. So, getting the information isn't going to help us if we still have to have a, have a newspaper, which I believe is what our city attorney has said, so.
Yeah, our state, the state statute is referenced in the background information that was supplied. Councilmember Johnson.
I just pointed clarification for folks. Mr. Mayor, my recollection on this statute is pretty good. I think it does require that to be a qualified newspaper, I think qualified is the term of art used in the statute. And it's in the same statute, it's a different subdivision. I don't remember which one, but it requires that it be, to be a qualified newspaper, that it reach 75% of the households in the community, within the city. I, I'm pretty confident that the West Central Tribune reaches that, but just for clarification, it's not population. It's, the key words are to be qualified, is a qualified newspaper, and then the other item would be 75% of the households, which I presume that's computed off of the census, I would assume, which was last taken in about, well, 2010, I think. Just for clarification.
I believe the city attorney clearly understands what we're asking of him, I believe. Is that correct?
That is correct. Now, I have not myself researched these various issues. My understanding, it was told to me, the West Central Tribune satisfies the definition of a qualified newspaper, that they're the only one in the city that does, that they are located in the city, which would require you to designate them.
Additional discussion?
Mayor Calvin.
Councilmember Nelson. Again, are we moving forward?
Yes, just, so we're going to ask the city attorney to spend the city's money to research the fact that we have to have a newspaper when we've already been told that information. So, he's going to go and spend some hours doing that to report back to us on Friday. I just wanted to clarify that.
I think what, what we're asking is that, I want to make sure that he understands what was just clarified by Councilmember Johnson, but that the information will come from, from Kevin. If he doesn't get that number, he will refer to the city attorney to make sure we're meeting the intent. So, if they come back and say that they're not meeting that, he would then refer that to the city attorney. Councilmember Johnson.
Just to kind of end this discussion, I believe they do their, have an audit of their own that they, that is, you know, satisfies the statute, and I'm guessing that if Kevin calls the West Central Tribune, they'll tell him what the number is. That'll take care of this.
Are you ready to vote? Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Christians.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. Resolution carries. Next is to designate the responsible authority for data practices as the city administrator. City Administrator Stevens?
Yes, again, this is a state statute and a requirement that the city designate a responsible authority for data practices. It's, that, that individual has been the city administrator. And again, it just, the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act regulates the data collected, created, received, maintained, and disseminated by a state agency. And so, again, every two years, the city must designate a responsible authority. And it's the recommendation to, designate the city administrator.
Okay, motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Okay, discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
I was going to make the motion.
Oh, okay.
I'll second the resolution.
We got that. We got the motion, we got the motion and seconded. Now, we're at discussion.
Yeah, we're moving on.
Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Okay, we got rid, we got done with that business. Got rid of that business. Boy, that was a slip. Where's that button you were going to have, Kevin? Okay, so now we are to the consent agenda items.
Also moved.
Second. Been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign? Motion carries. Wilmer City Council, open forum. As those of you that received the paper will have read, is that we are going to be following the policy that was established a number of years ago on a two-minute, or, I'm sorry, a three-minute timeframe on the open forum. And so, you'll notice that our city clerk has a timer set up, so I'm looking to see if we have anybody on open forum.
Mr. Mayor, I was distracted with opening ceremonies, and I do not know if anybody signed up over there on the signup clipboard.
Former member Heitke, could you tell us if anybody signed up over there? Oh, it's empty. Okay. I hope I didn't scare people off. So, we certainly want the public input. We want to hear from the public. That's what our desire is. It's not to, to limit that, it's just to make sure that we have a process that we're following that everybody understands. Consideration of establishment for fees resolution.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, every year at this time, we set fees so that the public knows what we're charging for various licenses, permits, events, rentals, and so forth. What we like to do for you is to put this in legislative print, more or less, where new recommendations are listed in the resolution as underlined, and those that are removed, we strike through, and then we clean the resolution up to next year. It's staff's recommendation that the council adopt a set of fees and rental rates in the resolution set before you for the calendar year 2015.
Move to approve. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve it. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, we, we didn't get any bounce on here from last year. Did any of these change drastically, or?
Kevin, go ahead and answer that question.
Well, the ones that are underlined, well, first off, there's some strike-throughs on there in page two.
I noticed that, yeah.
Because we no longer have our resort and Vlad lift station.
Right.
The dry floor events are new rates. Certainly, Mr. Brizendine can make a comment of what they were from, and if you're concerned about where we are in the market or the comparable system, he may make a comment, but those are the two changes. Dry floor events at $400 per day, and the ice rental now at $145 per hour.
Councilmember Christensen, do you want additional clarification from Steve?
I'm, I'm curious on the blue line dry floor events. Yes, if it says $400 a day, it's underlined, so is that new, or is that new?
Mr. Brizendine, would you care to answer that?
I would. Mayor Calvin, members of the council, Member Christensen, that is not new. It just was not on this document in the past. That is the same rate as a year ago.
Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion?
Mayor Calvin.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just to ask Mr. Brizendine to speak to the Robins Island shelters, did we not charge for the other ones just for the enclosed ones before?
Steve, can you answer that for us?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, Member Nelson, we have, again, this is clarification on this document. The open shelters were listed as open shelters and did not have the clarity. Open shelter number one is the only open shelter with electricity, thus why that's got a different rate, and we clarified that information in this document this year.
Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Consideration of auditorium change order. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, there is a two-step process. The initial one was a contract with Echo for remediation, and then we're undergoing, of course, improvements with Cornerstone. The first bid with Echo was bid at, starting at $199,000, plus in the bid, and we're offering that for clarity, dumpsters on a rate per dumpster for type of waste and with an unknown quantity, one that was not even estimated. But the last change order that we have here is, in the course of the demolition, they ran into some ductwork with plumbing and electrical wires. In fact, some of it was the active category five wiring for our computers. They were present in the vertical ductwork in the northwest and southwest corners, and so that unforeseen obstacle caused some additional time to cut away the ductwork while protecting the plumbing and electrical infrastructure, which was being used. That cost came in at $1,425. We recommend that the council authorize the change order number four in that exact amount. Just for your knowledge, then, we are giving you the quantity of the dumpsters that was in the original bid shown there. With this change order and the dumpsters and the original bids, the total cost of remediation then came to $207,595.80. With all that information, the only action we're requiring is that the council adopt a resolution authorizing change order number four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, I guess I'm not clear as to, do you know why this wasn't bid that way as to, you know, estimated amount of the waste, or that the bidders didn't consider that, or?
We just didn't know the volume of the waste. Obviously, the lead waste dumpster, that's the one that went J&amp;J Contracting came, and they took that out of state. That was lead and towels in the lead dust and so forth in the dumpsters. At $600 each was the demolition waste that was non-hazardous, but it was two-by-fours and sheet rock and ductwork and other things. There were three dumpsters of that. Quantity was unknown. Reasonable estimate that they thought it was between two and five, but they didn't know. The last one was non-demolition waste. That was all the items that we knew were full of lead and just decided they had to go. An example is there were, down in the gun range, there were hard tables. We washed the hard tables, but all those chairs were fabric, and you were, they were full of lead dust. full of lead dust. So they just went into the dumpsters. And they went out, I believe locally here if they took them, but absolutely could not estimate the amount of stuff we wanted to part with. And we weren't going to clean it. They were the professionals. So just some things with fabric and various other things that have been covered over those years, we just asked them to remove. Unknown.
Well, they, they knew they were going to be cleaning lead. I mean, that the cleanup would involve disposing of items, I presume, based on what they, that's the kind of work they do.
Right. But the last one was just volume of stuff. They didn't, volleyball nets, they were full of it, just all things like that that were not construction demolition.
So in other words, but then based on what you're saying, this wouldn't be considered a material change in the bid that they submitted?
No, not part of the change order. It's just we're informing you of the volume of those dumpsters.
City Administrator Stevens?
I think I have some, maybe that would clarify. They did bid a cost for each dumpster. They just didn't bid the quantity of dumpsters. And so.
Oh, that's what I didn't understand.
Yeah, so, yes. So there was a cost bid for the, for each dumpster, and this is just the total of what that quantity was, and they estimated a quantity, but it was a per dumpster, and this matches that per dumpster bid.
Thank you.
Mayor Calvin.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question on the actual change order number four. The vertical ductwork, is this different than the ductwork that we chose to leave in the building, or was this actually part of where this came into place?
No, that vertical was cut out of there in those two corners.
So this.
And there are pictures. I probably should have brought those, but they cut open one half of it, and then you can just see the wiring in there. And so they just can't tear out the ductwork. So they have to cut around it properly and protect all that computer wiring.
I understand that, but so do we still have capped ductwork in the building, or is this part of, was this part of what was removed?
This was the not capped. The capped was left in place, and it was mostly horizontal that was capped.
That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Okay.
Additional discussion? The resolution has been motioned and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Next is the consideration of fire contract for Dover Township. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, every year at this time, we give you a cost of fighting fires in Dover Township. It is six sections in Dover Township, along with the whole township of Wilmer and the city. And our fire department divides the manpower and calls as they went by calendar year. And we have that formula, I hope you have it in there. This is the old statewide formula we followed for years. It shows the cost from the 2013 fire year of man-hours for Dover versus a ratio of man-hours for Wilmer. It comes to $23,164.20. It is stats recommendation that we approve those leases by that contract amount, rather, and mail it off to the Dover Township officials.
Move to approve. Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded, discussion. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Dover fire contract for Dover Township. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Next on the agenda is consideration of an additional fourth channel to the Wilmer Regional Access. Ross is not here. Charlene, would you like to handle that for us?
I can, and then I think perhaps Councilmember Christensen can add anything to this since he chairs that group. But this is a request to add a fourth channel to the Wilmer Regional Access channels. This channel would be for events and local programming, and it would eventually become a high-definition channel. It is allowed under the franchise agreement we have with Charter, but it is required that the city council take action and then that we provide the Charter notice of that.
I apologize, Councilmember Christensen. I should have called on you for that. Would you like to make additional comments?
That's fine. She did fine.
Okay. Just recommendation of staff. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll move. Do approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Motion made and seconded to add the additional fourth channel to the Wilmer Regional Access. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What will happen when, when and if Windstream moves out? Does Charter pick up all four channels then, or they sharing the cost right now, or how does that work?
There is a separate franchise agreement with Charter and a separate franchise agreement with Windstream and such, and they are separate franchise agreements. We are in the process of beginning negotiate, of starting that process of working with an attorney on renegotiating those franchise agreements. I mean, if Windstream chooses not to have a franchise with the city, then they wouldn't be providing services within the city.
And Charter would continue to operate?
And Charter, I mean, we have no indication that Charter has, does any, wishes to do anything but to continue to provide service in the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not many communities have four channels of regional access, or even two or three. Wilmer's very fortunate, well, the only outstate ones that's going to get a high-definition channel, I believe Hutchinson's got one, the only other one in Minnesota. This will not be HD immediately. It will be, I believe, take effect in 2016. But because of the number of programs that are available and run on these channels, Rudy had asked that we go for another channel, a fourth one, and he's got the number. I didn't bring him with me, but there's thousands of programs that run each year for the public. And we've been informed at our committee meeting that he has now acquired the rights for many, many black and white movies from the '60s, late '50s, early '60s, and into, I believe, early '70s. Gunsmoke, things like that. So if people are interested, it will be on their scrolling as you look through the TV or the local access channel. Part of this agreement was also with Charter, had to do with them being able to change where our channels are. If you've been on public access, you know that 18 is 181 now, and there's three other channels we have on there. But again, Wilmer's fortunate, this area is fortunate to have the four channels we have and lots of programs on there, lots of viewing for the people.
Additional comments or questions? Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
It's a resolution also, Mr. Mayor. We've turned it into a resolution anyway.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. I as well would like to just thank Rack8 for their hard work. They do a great job down there in our local access. And that was one of the meetings I had after I was elected, is I went down there and met with Rudy, and the stuff he's doing down there is just phenomenal. So kudos to him, but also to Ross for the excellent work that he's doing, and he's really stepped up the game there. So we're very fortunate to have that here in our communities. So. Next we then have the announcement of council committee meeting dates. Now, the council meets next Monday.
Tuesday.
I'm sorry, next Tuesday. And so there probably would not be any committee meetings prior to that unless there's something urgent that we have to cover that I'm not aware of.
That is, yeah, that is correct, Mr. Mayor. I think we will have that scheduled for the next meeting on the 20th.
So in the absence of that, anything for the good of the order? I would entertain a motion. Councilmember Aman.
I would like to take a minute, if it's appropriate, if you allow me the time, to just read some thoughts I have from the city.
Was that what was supplied in the Friday memo?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we hold that to the next meeting?
You do that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Not hearing anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.